Good evening, this is the Special Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. That is October 14, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commission Member George Amaya.
Present.
Commission Member Javier Barrasa.
Present.
Commission Member Uo Garcia. President. Vice Chairman Angelica Ortiz.
Present.
Commission Member Marco Pinzón.
Present.
Commission Member Verónica Savala.
Present.
Chairman Ruben Walsh.
Present.
Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Roman. Commission Member Barrasa, can you please lead us on the pledge of allegiance?
Please, in that way, enjoy me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Consent Agenda. All matters are considered to be routine by the Planning and Zoning Commission and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Item 38, Approval of Minutes. Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held October 14, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of meeting minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held October 14, 2025.
Motion by Commission Member Amaya, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commission Member Garcia, all those in favor say aye.
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 And say nay. Motion carries. Item number four, Public Hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be considering a vote or action on the following cases. Any vote or action will be considered separately for each case. For items 4A will be a minor amendment case number 2025-0273 and item 4B rezoning case number 2025-0274. I would like to open the items and the public hearing simultaneously. We will have one staff presentation and then take independent action for each case. Item 4A, Public Hearing followed by Discussion and Possible Action on any and all matters regarding Minor Amendment Case Number 2025-0273, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Comité de Bienestar to amend the City of San Luis 2040 general plan, changing the land use designation of 3.13 acres from mixed-use activity center MU to medium-density residential MDR, portion of accessories parcel number APN 775-56-001, located at the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Urtu Suastegui Street in San Luis, Arizona. This is an item continued from the meeting of October 14, 2025. Item 4B, Public Hearing followed by Discussion and Possible Action on any and all matters regarding rezoning case number 2025-0274, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering on behalf of Comité de Bienestar to rezon approximately 3.13 acres from rural area RA-10 to medium-high-density residential R-2 and approximately 2.80 acres from rural area RA-10 to high-density residential R-3, accessories parcel number APN 775-56-001, located at the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Urtu Suastegui Street in San Luis, Arizona. This is also an item continued from the meeting from October 14, 2025. At this time, we will have staff presentation.
Good evening Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commission Members. For the record, these two items were previously presented to the Commission in October. At that meeting, the Commission voted to continue these items to this special meeting due to a typo and having the four members of the Commission present in order to make a recommendation. Since that meeting, there hasn't been any changes to the design or the recommended conditions from staff. So the first item is the the minor amendment and the property is located at the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Urtu Suastegui Street. This amendment applies to the the western portion of the property, shown in blue, which is 3.13 acres. It will change the land use designation from mixed-use activity to medium-density residential. This designation will support the proposed R2 zoning for townhomes. And the red portion, which is 2.8 acres, already has a mixed-use activity center designation which supports the R3 zoning that will be requested for apartments. This is the so on the minor amendments, staff recommends approval because it's consistent with the city's general plan and supports a balanced mix of housing types near existing infrastructure and services. For the second case, which is the rezoning, it will rezon 3.13 acres from RA10 to R2 and the eastern 2.80 acres from RA10 to R3. And the different zonings are shown here in blue and red. The R2 is for townhomes and the R3 is for apartments. This is the same layout and we're proposing the same conditions as presented in October. Staff recommends approval with the conditions of limiting the townhomes along the northern property to one story to protect the privacy of existing residents. It also requires a traffic impact study with all the necessary improvements to be constructed by the developer and that the developer must comply with all applicable regulations at the time of the design and the time of construction. Regardless of the Commission's final recommendation tonight, both items require a recommendation to be forward to City Council for final action. The applicant is here and members of the neighborhood are also present in case you have any questions.
At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for Minor Amendment Case Number 2025-0273 and rezoning case number 2025-0274. This is the call to the public on this item. Any comments from the public? If anyone wishes to speak or make any comments in regards to this subject, this is the time to do it.
Buenas tardes a todos, Ana Lomely, 1133 San Luis Lane. Y pues como la vez pasada, les agradecemos el tiempo que están aplicando para esta situación. Y con todo el respeto, me dirijo de nuevo y diciéndoles que ya no hay más que podamos discutir, ya terminamos. Todo lo que nuestras inquietudes están en escrito, black and white, okay? Entonces, no miro... Ya esto es agresivo. Para las personas distinguidas, ustedes los que votaron a favor del proyecto, pues me dejan mucho que desear. Me parece que no están mirando... Bueno, ignorancia, cae en la ignorancia, con todo el respeto. Yo no soy ingeniero, ni nada de arquitecto, ni nada que ver con eso, pero me parece que cae en la ignorancia. A los que dijeron en contra del proyecto, los felicito porque sí me dejan una satisfacción de que tenemos unas personas inteligentes dirigiendo el futuro de este pueblo, okay? Entonces, lo que se dijo la vez pasada, lo que pusimos en escrito por lo que firmamos, de mi parte, no estoy de acuerdo a ese proyecto. Les expliqué la vez pasada, hay mucho desierto gracias a Dios en este pueblo. Ofrezcanle a los desarrolladores cuáles quieren otro terreno para que lo hagan, okay? Pero ahí no es bueno para nosotros, no es una opción. Bueno, ya no quiero andar en eso porque ya lo hablamos. Entonces, yo creo que merecemos respeto. Tenemos cosas que hacer, tenemos vidas, tenemos cosas que hacer. Yo personalmente tengo una vida muy ocupada por esa tarde. Entonces, ya, ya lo siento como burla. Entonces, por lo que firmé es lo mismo, me opongo a ese proyecto. Y si ellos quieren seguir desarrollando o continuar con su proyecto, hagan casas normales. En eso no hay problema, okay? Muchas gracias por su atención, con permiso.
Anyone else from the public?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. BNA Vega with Vega and Vega Engineering, representing the developer. Again, I'm just here to answer any questions the Commissioners might have. I think it's worth mentioning that the land is just not available for the city to give to the other developers. I think that's a very nonsense comment. I don't think that it's worth... I don't think it's fair for you guys to get offended. I think everybody has his opinion and everybody is looking at the case the way that it's presented. And I just want to mention that the land and the desert is just not to be given, so, and we know that. So I just want to make that comment and put it on record and I'd be more glad to answer any questions the Commissioners might have. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vega.
I'm a little surprised and that's why I'm here, because of the commotion resulting from this. We're not a regular developer, we're a mission developer. We are in a mission to provide affordable housing to this town. Now, we bought this land because it was the only land available at the time from the state. It cost us nearly a million dollars because somebody here thought it was funny. Well, it's not funny, it's just... The question you should ask is, we worked with the city to make sure that there was a privacy issue, it would be addressed. We moved the apartments from the back of the buildings. We did everything we could to appease the neighborhood. It just isn't appeasable. I mean, this lady is from San Luis Lane, which is, I don't know where, Comité de Bienestar, but Comité de Bienestar is the developer they're talking about. And we're not a regular developer, we're a nonprofit developer. Our mission is to provide affordable housing. There's no way we can build homes in that area and make them affordable. There's absolutely no way, given the cost of land. So I'm appealing to you common sense to realize that this is a project that the city has blessed, that is going to go in front of the council, that doesn't have any drawbacks. I understand the desire of people to keep what they have, but that's what bothers me at this particular time. The fact is, we're not only doing affordable housing, that's all we're doing. And we've been doing that for the last 40 years and nobody complained. Those people live at the comité. The only reason they live there is because Comité de Bienestar, which is the developer in this town, gave them an opportunity to leave there. So to me, it's offensive to hear people want to keep their appraisal and keep their land the way it is because our mission is different. Maybe they forgot where they came from, but I haven't forgotten where we came from. And this is what we do, and this is what we do, and this is what the city wants. And we went through all this process to try to appease the privacy concerns. They want to look at the border. I don't understand what the issues are here because there are really no issues. You've got to either recommend approval denial, but it's got to get to the council, the council makes the final decision. But I'm really surprised about the comments that are being made about the development because we're a community that's barely low income. I mean, there's... People who want to keep it the way it is don't understand the fact that there is no affordable housing anymore. Everything costs... Everything that used to cost 70, 80,000 now costs 250,000. How affordable is that? The only affordable things in this community that are subsidized are apartments. So we moved the apartments away from the wall to give them privacy. We met the desire of the city to keep it one floor. We've done everything we can to appease the desires of those people that live around there. I still feel a little bit confused about all the commotion about it. I can understand Mrs. Ortiz, who lives in that area, saying something about it because it's going to affect her. But I don't understand what somebody from the San Luis Lane would have anything to say about anything that happens on the other side of town. I can answer any questions you guys have, I'm sorry. I just got a little carried away. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Buenas tardes a todos ustedes. Mi nombre es Griselda Franco. Yo vivo en 506 Play, primero enfrente ahí en la pure esquina. Y con todo el respeto que el señor Tony y el otro señor vino a hablar, yo quiero decirles que no estamos de acuerdo. Esos apartamentos va a haber muchísima, muchísima gente. No hay ni tan siquiera parqueaderos disponibles. Ahorita ya empezó el trabajo, apenas está empezando y no nos acabamos con los apartamentos de las casitas porque van y se parquean todos ahí enfrente, ahí en todo el área de nosotras. Ahora, como dijo la señora Ana, hay mucho terreno. ¿Por qué no se van a buscar otros terrenos? Ellos tienen bastante terrenos. ¿Por qué tienen que ir a ponernos todos esos apartamentos ahí enfrente de nuestras casas? Donde va a haber un trafical, mucha aglomeración de gente. Y no estamos de acuerdo. Y como yo digo señor Tony y el otra persona, ¿por qué no ponen esos apartamentos enfrente de sus casas a ver si les va a gustar? No estamos de acuerdo, rotundamente no. That's all, gracias.
Gracias. Anyone else?
Buenas tardes, miembro jurado René Morales, 1131, San Luis Lane. Veo los mismos miembros, hemos estado hablando lo mismo, este... Por cinco meetings que hemos tenido aquí. Yo creo que ya estamos un poquito cansados. Tenemos nuestra propia vida, tenemos nuestros cosas que hacer. Cada vez que hay una meeting, si ven, ya venimos menos gente. Ya las personas pues están cansando y no quieren venir a expresar su su inconformidad que tienen. El terreno este sí van a ser casas a four of houses disponibles para gente que tiene su income un poquito menor. Una diferencia entre hacer una casa disponible para gente con bajo pero también el tipo de vivienda que van a estar, ¿cómo van a estar viviendo? Pueden tener una casa así, van a comprar la casa que a lo mejor con el tiempo la van a dejar, la van a perder porque no van a poder pagarla o como la están haciendo, están haciendo un montón de casas chiquitas. La tipo de vivienda que van a tener es... No van a poder estar a gusto con ellas, esa es una cosa. No voy a venir otra vez con lo mismo de la seguridad porque pues ya lo hemos hablado muchas veces. Ya ustedes saben todas las inconformidades. No sé si a los de las personas que acaban de venir ya les pasaron el mismo reporte de que hemos estado discutiendo todo el tiempo aquí. Entonces, sino para que lo vean y vean cuáles son nuestras quejas, cuáles son los que la hay en conformidad. Simplemente ayer estaba caminando por la calle por Urtu Suastegui y agarré por la sexta para ir a las casitas. A un lado de las casitas, hasta el Otevaldi, estaba un autobús de Phil employees. Estaban como unos cinco, seis carros más estacionados ahí. No mires que el autobús ese de Phil employees es una persona que vive ahí. Han de ser como unos 20 que viven en un departamento chiquito que se están metiendo a vivir. Por favor, veanlo como son las cosas. Es que eso es lo que va a pasar ahora si nos meten otra vez uno, dos, tres. Aparte de la seguridad, aparte de toda la gente. El tráfico para salir, ahora que salimos de ahí de mi casa que venía para acá, olvídate, es un trafical. Para entrar a San Luis ahorita duré como unos 20 minutos. Si te vienes por acá por Urtu Suastegui, aparte de que está el centro comercial, el centro industrial Park, es un tráfico de camiones, es un tráfico de gente. No hay ni semáforos, los cuatro altos no son suficientes para ahí. Les van a meter esas casitas ahí, le van a meter esos departamentos, todos los tráficos. ¿Dónde se van a estacionar esos? Aunque les pongan estacionamiento, a cada departamento que le que le valen dos estacionamientos, saben que no van a hacer nada más dos carros. ¿Dónde se van a venir? Se van a estacionar en las calles adyacentes que tienen y van a obstaculizar todo, más el tráfico todavía del que hay. Entonces, ya, ya como que son muchas veces que venimos y hablamos lo mismo y lo mismo todo el tiempo. Necesitamos pues que en realidad se decidan, o sea, hagan algo que en realidad le convenga a la comunidad, no nada más a nosotros, a la comunidad porque no es solo nosotros que nos está afectando, está afectando todo el tráfico del Urtu Suastegui. Eso es una cosa, nada más uno de los planes. Si alguien, si no han visto los reportes y no han visto las juntas que hemos tenido, por favor, compartanlas para que sepan ellos. Gracias.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Is there any off-site parking allowed for arterial streets such as Urtu Suastegui and Sixth Avenue?
Commission Member Amaya, for arterial streets, there's no parking permitted. However, on Locostreet, anyone can park as long as they don't violate any traffic.
Non-artificial streets, public right-of-way could be used for public parking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a question for staff? We had a peculiar situation here with a minor amendment. I was just pondering, since only it's a portion of the minor amendment and I guess, let's say it gets with a recommendation of denial from here. And still the other portion for the rezoning is still valid, right? It still will go, even though if we... And if it gets denied by the council members, the rezoning from RA10 to R3 will go or both die?
Both will go to the city council, whether it's approval recommendation or deny recommendation from the Commission or a combination of one approval, one denial. It will be presented to the city council. If the minor amendment is denied by council, the R3 zoning can still be approved.
Because it's only a portion here, okay, thank you. Now, even so, in the county, even we have a land use. The general plan of City of San Luis calls for high density in this area. So actually, they're going for a lens-dense land use just to, as a token of, you know, good faith to the neighbors. So there won't be high density in that portion now that is buttoned on the northwest of this property. So, but if they would have decided to go high density in the whole thing, all they needed was just rezoning. was just rezoning, correct?
Commission Member, yes, that is correct. The minor amendment will allow a lower density zoning. So the current designation is mixed activity use, which allows for R three, which is higher density.
Okay. Now, is there any provisions in the land, in the general plan that allow, even you have that high-density land use to allow low-density zoning, or there's no provision for that? I don't know, if you know, tap your head.
For the mixed use, it doesn't allow low density, but for the medium density, it only allows R two, which is a higher density, but it will allow R one six, which is a single-family lower density.
Okay, thank you. Now, one more question, it's probably a building question. What's the height limit allowed with no permits in the city of San Luis? It said, I don't know if I read, eight feet, and you don't need a permit for eight-feet wall?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff. Veronica, Commission Member Veronica Zavala, for Jose. We cannot have a traffic study before, right? And all the decisions that we make is, is a requirement after, when they submit it to council.
Commission Members of Allah, so generally, the rezonings or the, any project within the city will require a traffic study, and it's usually done at the time of the construction or before the construction. The commission could recommend that they provide a traffic study before the, was part of the rezoning, but it will be, have to be approved by council, requested at the council presentation.
And my concern is because increasing the density in a sensitive safety zone is close to the border and is, they require heavy law enforcement response right there. And I know is, is by the code, the zoning and all that. And I approached to you last week when I arrived regarding asking of the parking space required by code in apartment, and it's one and a half per apartment, which is very small. I mean, the amount, minimum is two cars per family. So the parking space was my concern, and the traffic that will be impacting in that area with the number of apartments that will be built.
So, Commission Member, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. And my question is if you check about the parking with other cities?
Yeah, yeah, so just to go back a little bit on the traffic study, so the condition will require the developer to do a traffic study, and whatever improvements are recommended by that study, the developer has to do those improvements. So if the developer doesn't agree or doesn't want to do those improvements, then the project doesn't proceed. So that's, that's the condition that it has. Regarding the parking, we look into the adjacent municipalities, and San Luis actually requires more parking spaces for apartments than other municipalities.
So they require less than one parking space?
So for the city of San Luis, for a two-bedroom apartment requires two parking spaces per unit, while Somarchan and Yuma requires one point five parking spaces per unit. And in addition, we require visitor parking, one parking for every ten units.
Yes, that was my, my only concern, if we can have as an option the traffic study before. You know, it's, it's hard for us to recommend, even though we're not approving, the recommendation without seeing what is going to be affecting the, not only the neighbors, but schools and all the areas. And like I said, it's very close to the border and it's, there's a lot of, they need a lot of heavy response right there. And if we don't have the police available, it's just a comment. Thank you, Jose.
Anyone else? I will go ahead, okay.
Buenas tardes, Betsy Lara, four six four North Sixth Place. Ya parece que muchas de las cosas que hemos dicho ahora ya se recalcaron varias veces, pero pues aquí estamos otra vez, entonces hay que repetir. La verdad aquí, el punto es que no se trata de estar en contra del progreso, sino de exigir proyectos responsables y éticos y bien planificados, donde las familias pueden vivir con dignidad. Ya les hemos dicho que no en sí estar en cajas apretadas que no benefician a las, pues parece que está beneficiando a los desarrolladores más que a los residentes. Lo que les estamos pidiendo aquí es que reconsideren cómo se hace este proyecto, no es en sí no dar opción de casas a nadie. Hay que trabajar para crear una solución más, pues mejor hecha para todos y que no estén saturando ni degradando nuestra comunidad. Ya escuchamos que los representantes de los desarrolladores dijeron previamente, ellos son una compañía ética, el desarrollador también es ético, todo está hecho bajo código, y es más, el desarrollador hasta se ha enfocado en ayudar a la comunidad. Okay. Pero no, porque todo está hecho bajo código significa que en realidad está hecho bien. Nosotros, pues todos los que vivimos aquí sabemos que la planificación y el crecimiento de la ciudad no es algo que se tomó tanto en cuenta, o parece que no se ha tomado tanto en cuenta, a cómo se construye y crece San Luis. Hay mucho embotellamiento, como se ha dicho, por todas partes. Aquí por esto de lo de la fila, cruzando a México, no se puede hacer nada, los caminos, casas, negocios, todo está saturado. Y obviamente seguro todas estas calles y todos estos caminos hicieron bajo código. Entonces, no es por decir, o que sigan diciendo, todo está hecho bajo código, es que estos códigos obviamente no sirven. Van a hacer un hospital nuevo enfrente de la línea, a ver cómo nos va con eso. Eso solamente un ejemplo para decir cómo no se está tomando en cuenta la necesidad de la comunidad como crece, sino que nada más hay que construir y hay que hacer y a ver cómo se la arreglan ya después. Los parqueaderos o los estacionamientos ya se, ya se recalcó que a todo mundo nos viene estresados, porque luego va a haber mucho carro por todas partes. Sí por sí, no se cabe en las calles, en lo que quieren pasar dos carros y hay tanto carro estacionado a los lados. Esconderse bajo el escudo, decir que estamos ayudando a las personas a que tengan viviendas, que no tuvieran sin esta construcción, se me hace como que muy abusivo. Están dando viviendas y espacios sin dignidad y sin considerar como twenty-nine townhouses y cincuenta y cuatro apartamentos en tan poco espacio, en una calle tan transitada como Ortuzastigui, causa mucho estrés para la gente que ya vive ahí y para los que van a vivir ahí. Gente saliendo al trabajo, gente llevando niños a la escuela, cosas que hacer, citas, lo que tú quieras. El señor Tony, de parte de la comunidad, del comité de bienestar, nos pide, bueno, les pide a ustedes que tengan sentido común, porque ellos solamente intentan ayudar a las personas, pero es que como tanta vivienda, vivienda no tiene, en ese espacio no tiene sentido común. Parece se llama avaricia de hay que sacar todo el dinero posible a aprovecharse de la necesidad. Esto no suena tanto como querer ayudar a las viviendas, y como dijeron muchas personas, aquí no es de parar algún crecimiento, que no haga vivienda económica, nada más que hay que hacerlo poquita, con poquita más consideración a la ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias. If there are no more comments, I will go ahead and close the public hearing for minor amendment case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two seven three and rezoning case number twenty twenty-five dash zero seven four. We will go ahead now and and have action on item four A, minor amendment case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two seven three. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman. I move to forward minor general plan amendment case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two seventy-three to the city council with recommendation of approval.
There's a motion by Commission Member Barrasa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commission Member Anaya. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those again, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Roll call.
Commission Member Georgia Maya.
Aye.
Commission Member Javier Barrasa.
Aye.
Commission Member U García.
Nay.
By Chairman Angelica Ortiz.
Nay.
Commission Member Marco Pinzón.
Nay.
Commission Member, Member Veronica Zavala.
Nay.
Chairman Ruin Walsh.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Roman. Rezoning case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two seven four.
Well, motion four. I mean, there was four. Want to deny, it dies, I mean deny, and deny.
Motion failed.
Motion fails.
It goes to the council with the council, I mean, legal?
Yes, now you have a recommendation. It can go to council, as you broke the tie. Deny.
The motion was for denial.
Because it failed, the motion to approve failed, and then it goes, okay.
Correct. It was, what was the number again, Roman?
It was five nays and two ayes.
Correct, so there's a recommendation of denial.
Okay.
Item E, action on item four A, minor amendment case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two seven three. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, are you referring to the rezoning case?
Yeah.
That is item number two zero two five dash zero two
Two seven four. That is correct, right? Yes. I have the wrong information, Mr. Roman. Yes. Thank you.
You're going to make a motion on the rezoning? That's the motion. On the rezoning. You will introduce a motion to the rezoning?
Yes. We'll go ahead and do a motion on rezoning case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two seven four. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to move forward rezoning case number two zero two five dash zero two seven four to city council with recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions of approval recommended by staff.
Motion by Commission Member Amaya. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commission Member García. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, say nay.
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 Roll call, please.
Commission Member George Amaya.
Aye.
Commission Member Javier Barrasa.
Aye.
Commission Member U García.
Aye.
By Chairman Angelica Ortiz.
Nay.
Commission Member Marco Pinzón.
Nay.
Commission Member Veronica Zavala.
Nay.
Chairman Ruin Walsh.
Nay.
Motion is for denial.
Rules. Two eyes and five nays.
Three.
Three. Four nays and three ayes.
Item five. Items requiring discussion and interaction, the planning and zoning commission will be
Mr. Chairman, can I just, recommendation, if we can inform the residents that there's still going to be another meeting in front of the council members for action. This will be approval or denial of the request. So it's still one more meeting. I know you guys are tired and coming to the meetings, but there's going to be another meeting. Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I will go ahead now and open the public hearing.
Thank you. I just forgot, and I want to touch against, again, on the subject that, as you can see, there's not that many residents for this meeting like before, correct? So we were told to stop attending these meetings because everything was already fixed. Estoy diciendo, traduciendo, se están dando cuenta que el mismo número de personas que vinieron en otras juntas, juntas previas, no están aquí hoy, porque muchas personas agarraron el mensaje de que ya no vengan a las meetings, que ya está todo arreglado, concretado, para que continúe este proyecto, entonces que ya no vengan. Hasta yo dije, ay no, pues pero no, sabe que aquí estoy, porque tenemos el derecho de decir que nos conviene como comunidad. Entonces sí, for the record, please, you know, there are rumors that we should not continue coming to these meetings because everything is already fixed. Agreed, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I will go ahead and now close the public hearing. Item number five. The planning and zoning commission will be considering a vote or action on the following cases. Any vote or action will be considered separately for each case. Item five A, discussion and possible action on any and all matters regarding subdivision case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight two P, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering PLC on behalf of Von Verde Partners LLC for the approval of Orchidea Park Phase Two preliminary plat. The property is located on east of Twenty Fourth Avenue and south of Orchidea Park Phase One subdivision in San Luis, Arizona.
Chairman, by Chairman, Commission Members, this is a request for the preliminary approval for Orchidea Phase Two. The property located at Twenty Fourth Avenue, east of Twenty Fourth Avenue and south of Orchidea Park Phase One. This face covers a hundred and ten acres, which includes a hundred and fifty-five residential lots and a seventy-four acre parcel owned by the Yuma Junior High School District. This parcel is being added to bringing it to compliance as required by a development agreement that was approved by city council. The request is consistent with the general plan and the zoning. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that the applicant addresses comments on a letter dated October sixteen, twenty twenty-fifth, twenty-five, before bringing the final plat to council, and the developer must comply with the development agreement under resolution twenty-three fifty. Just for the record, the applicant submitted revised plans and already are under review by staff. Most of the comments have been addressed already.
Mr. Chair, could we perform item five A and five B concurrently and take independent action, have discussion on both items?
Yes. I will go ahead and we will go ahead and open the, and open the items simultaneously, five A and five B, discussion and possible action on all, on any and all matters regarding subdivision case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight three F, a request by Vega and Vega Engineering PLC on behalf of Von Verde Partners LLC for the approval of Orchidea Park for the approval of Orchidea Park Phase Two final plat. The property is located on east of Twenty-Fourth Avenue and south of Orchidea Park Phase One subdivision in San Luis, Arizona. Staff presentation.
Chairman, by chairman, commission members. So these two projects are, are the same location. One is for the preliminary plat approval and one is for the final. Both are recommended for approval with the conditions previously stated. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Also, the applicant is here in case you have any question for them.
Any questions from commission members?
I have a question for Jose. So were there made a, a traffic study for this, this area?
Yes.
The only way these people can exit is after Avenue, Avenue E. What other, what other street can, can the people exit this subdivision?
So right now the connection is through County Twenty-Fourth Street. There's an existing traffic study that was done for the whole area on that property. And there is requirements of the development agreement that requires when a specific parcel develops, they have to do a connection to Avenue E on the south portion.
So they're going to be connecting to Avenue E and it would be the south side and the north side?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? We will now take action on subdivision case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight two P. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve subdivision case number two zero two five dash zero two eight two P. Preliminary plat for Orchidea Park Phase Two subdivision with conditions as recommended by staff.
Motion by Commission Member Barrasa, second. Amaya. Second by Commission Member Pinzón. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I made the motion, Commission Member Amaya, and second by.
Pinzón, yes. All those against, say nay. Motion carries. We will now take action on subdivision case number twenty twenty-five dash zero two eight two P. Is there a motion?
I move to forward subdivision case number two zero two five dash zero two eight three F to the city council with the recommendations approval with conditions as presented by staff.
There's a motion by Commission Member Pinzón, there's a second by Commission Member.
Second.
Amaya. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion carries. Is there a motion to it during the meeting? So move.
Second.
Motion by Commission Member Pinzón, second by Commission Member García. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Motion carries.